For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, September 5th, 2017. Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a couple of modifications to the agenda this evening. I'd like to add, under 9B would be the proclamation for the Tunnel to Towers, and I'd like to remove 15. Close session. So moved?
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
I guess I should have asked if there were any others while we were at it. Are there any others? Noah? Okay. Approval of the minutes for regular session of August 21st, 2017, and close session of August 21st, 2017. Karen did point out that the resolution for the splash pad was listed in the minutes as 2017-08, which is actually 2017-07, so we'll have that revised. Is there any other issues? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's meeting that you're allowed to address council with the exception of a public meeting or public information meeting where for the police vehicle, so if you've got a comment on the purchase of the police vehicle, we'll do that later. But any other agenda and non-agenda items, if you'd like to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Christina Catachi. My address is 417 South Second Avenue. I'm back. Thank you for this opportunity to share my comments with the council, continuing on the topic of Alpena joining the now 372 climate mayors in their pledge to adopt the Paris Climate Agreement goals. While a decision to join has been postponed, so that the city attorney, Piper, can take time to research the issue and report back on what it would mean for Alpena, I wanted to share some ideas that I hope will expand the discussion and increase our chances of embarking on a proactive sustainability plan for the City of Alpena. At the August 7th City Council Meeting, Mayor Walagora commented that the city's doing a lot already in the area of sustainability, and we are. As an enthusiastic, fairly new resident of this beautiful city, I was so happy to see the recycling dumpsters become available near my home so that I and all my neighbors can now easily reduce the waste that we contribute to landfills. As I've said before in a comment I made before council in July, city government and planners have served Alpena well, as we have a remarkably walkable and bikeable city. There's a link on the city's website to a great tree planting partnership program. Dig a little deeper on our website and you'll find a brief statement about how we are nurturing growth in new industries, such as for the wind energy market. These are the sustainable things we're doing. They're transparent, they're happening already. There may be other things that I'm not aware of, nevertheless, we should be doing more. For starters, we should have at least an entire page of the city website dedicated to promoting what we do to conserve this incredible piece of here on shore that we occupy. That page should also call attention to our sustainability plans, short term and long term. It should highlight what we will do to promote citywide conservation and minimize carbon emissions. As I stand before you, nervous about public speaking, I am also acutely aware of the sense of duty and honor in your commitment to serve our city, how you all show up here to represent our city while having other jobs and responsibilities. I'm grateful for your service. Getting up here also makes me reflect on something my parents always instilled in me, to make a living for myself and a place in this world so that life will be better for my children. Seeing your commitment to our city, I don't doubt that all of your parents shared that same goal with all of you. We need a plan for the future of our city to make sure we leave it better than we found it for our children. Climate change is real. Scientists, the best and the brightest, all agree. We've got to make changes, do more and do better. Not coincidentally, on August 7th, when I came before you to ask that we join the other climate mayors in their pledge to uphold the Paris Climate Agreement, the U.S. Global Change Research Program released a 673-page national climate assessment report with some alarming findings. I can send a link to all of you via email. Pretty big file, though. The U.S. Global Change Research Program is a federal initiative that coordinates and integrates federal research from 13 different agencies, and it was also a presidential initiative started in 1989 under the Reagan administration. Conservation, sustainability, and understanding of the urgency of addressing climate change are bipartisan concepts. We all have to work together on this. While our current administration has stepped back from global leadership, state and city governments, institutions, businesses, and private citizens have taken up the charge, I implore of you on behalf of myself and members of the People for Social Justice and the Action Group of Northeast Michigan to make this a priority, but don't do it alone. Convene a committee of private citizens to draft our city's sustainability plans. I would volunteer, as I know many others who would. Alpena needs the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. Have teachers handpick and nominate some of our best and brightest high school students. I served on one many, many moons ago when I was in high school in Tempe, Arizona. This is an issue that our youth are passionate about. They should be involved in forward planning. Look for locally owned small businesses to become stakeholders in an environmental safeguard initiative. As I shared at the meeting on August 7th, in my experience as a small business owner, environmental sustainability is great for the profitability of small businesses. Take a stand as our city leadership and commit to uphold the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement. It would give our city a ready-made framework and 372 partners in the climate mayors who've already signed on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. (applause)
Good evening. My name is April Beal. I live at 123 East Dunbar in Alpena, Michigan. In wake of the white supremacist "Unite to Right" protest in Charlottesville last month in August 12th, our country has once been reminded that sadly racism is alive and well in 2017. It can be seen on a national level, on all media outlets, as well as even in a small town, we can see hate groups being exposed on social media outlets. Last month, the president was widely criticized by both Republican and Democratic parties or leaders in Congress because of his inability or refusal to make clear statements condemning racism in hate groups. Though he issued a statement two days after, his failure to do so immediately disappointed many Americans, including myself, and did not provide the wisdom and leadership we as citizens need to hear from our elected leaders. Accordingly, I am asking each one of you to denounce racism and hate in our community very publicly to show the citizens on a local level that hate and racism in our city of Alpena will not be tolerated in any form or on any level. I ask that you denounce racism tonight on the record, tomorrow in an individual press release, and on any and all social media accounts associated with your name. In addition, I'd like each of you to send an individual letter to the editor of the Alpena News denouncing hate and racism of all forms in our community of Alpena because we do have hate groups here in Alpena. Thank you for representing the good people of Alpena. (applause)
I'm Angie Skiba of 635 River Street. I checked to see if you folks were on the agenda and you were not, so I didn't come completely prepared. Just because there is hate and racism in many cities, I don't see that in Alpena. I am adamantly opposed to Alpena joining in with the other 372 climate mayors. That is a partisan issue. We have no business with this board jumping in on a partisan issue, and I feel there are many people that agree with me out there. If we need to get petitions signed, or if we need to take this to a vote of the public, I don't feel that this board is who this should be taken to. I do not agree that this is an issue that they should be taking up. It is definitely a partisan issue, and Alpena is a fabulous city. We have great attributes and wonderful resources, and I totally agree that we should reinforce the positive with all of our resources and keep that flowing, and I think that the board does a wonderful job at keeping this in a positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Anyone else this evening? Okay. Thank you. The consent agenda this evening are A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $357,067.65, and B is two council appointments to the Wildlife Sanctuary Board for a three-year term expiring September 1st, 2020, as Karen Enderline and Boris Gerber.
Will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Next up are the presentations of the life-saving commendations. We have Chief Forbush from the Alpena Fire Department.
Good evening, Honorable Councilman, Mayor. It's a good night tonight. I have good news. Take a little bit of time, because I have good news. On May 3rd, 2017, Andrew McGuire, Mr. McGuire with us?
Mayor.
There you are. I knew you were here someplace. Thank you, sir. Andrew McGuire suffered sudden cardiac arrest at Thunder Bay Junior High. Bystander Austin Hawkes, Austin here? Thank you. Get to you in just a moment. Took immediate action to getting CPR and continuing until emergency personnel could arrive. City County Fire paramedics Dan Hibner and Rob Hamilton were the first ambulance to arrive and began using high-performance CPR in a team effort with city captain paramedic Rob Edmonds. Alpena Township crews, including Captain Ken Piper, firefighter EMT Jake Ordway, and firefighter MFR Matt Klimcheck, arrived very shortly thereafter and integrated into the pit crew concept of high-performance CPR rotation, thereby enabling paramedics to administer medications and perform other advanced life-saving techniques. Both departments received high-performance CPR training through a grant from the Michigan Rural EMS Network's My Rescue Initiative in 2016. Funding from the Community Foundation of Northeast Michigan made possible the CPR assessment meter like this that was used to determine the quality of the CPR in terms of the rate and the timing and so forth, and most importantly, to minimize the gaps. We found that in the latest science, you really need to minimize those times off the chest and keep it almost continuous, and these meters made it possible to do that, and are actually used on patients on every ambulance we have at this point. Mr. McGuire was treated at the scene and regained a viable heart rhythm en route to Mid-Michigan Medical Center Alpena where he became increasingly alert. Doctors there identified that he was suffering from a specific type of heart attack called a STEMI and transferred him to McLaren Northern Michigan Hospital for additional specialized care. There's Austin. I'll react to Austin in a second. There. The Alpena City Fire Department's Mobile Intensive Care Unit staffed by firefighter paramedic Mike Torek and Lieutenant Critical Pilot Paramedic Tim Slosser provided advanced care en route to Petaski where Mr. McGuire recovered and was ultimately relieved. EMS is a system, and it really involves many different players. We've addressed all five links in the system on this particular incident. Early access, bystanders calling Alpena County 911 when they recognize that an emergency exists. Trained emergency medical dispatchers can give pre-arrival instructions how to help in the meantime, before professional rescuers arrive. In this case, I don't believe that was necessary, but it would have been available had it needed to be, so the early access was covered. Early CPR was covered by Mr. Hawkes, who started CPR and maintained it until help arrived, and then continued with high-performance CPR by the Alpena City County medics and Alpena Township fire personnel, again made possible through those MyRUMs and community foundation support. Early defibrillation in this case was provided by a manual defibrillator used by the paramedics, but it could just as easily have been an AED, which had been placed throughout the community through the MyRUMs grant and through other sources as well. Early advanced life support was covered by the Alpena County Ambulance Village with helps to support and all ALS ambulance service countywide, operated in conjunction with the City of Alpena Fire Department. And lastly, post-resuscitative care is absolutely critical. No matter what we do in the field, if we can't hand them off to the right specialists in the healthcare field, it won't be effective, and so further stabilization of the patient and the most urgent steps in mitigating his condition were done at Mid-Michigan Alpena. When further specialized care became necessary, the MECU was available to move him to a larger facility where he ultimately got the care that he needed. So our community has taken steps to address all five links in the chain, and as a result, a life was saved on that May evening. Attending the presentation this evening, I'd just like to call out is Mr. McGuire and his family, Julie Weisen from the Community Foundation of Northeast Michigan. Julie, you here? Somebody's here from CFNEM, I'm sure. Leslie Hall, the Executive Director of the Michigan Rural EMS Network, who's back behind me. I believe there's an Alpena County Commissioner here, Cam Habermill, was going to try, he didn't know if he'd make it. He was going to send Bill Peterson. Did Bill make it? Might still be in the hallway, it's possible. And Dr. Christopher Rancant, who was our EMS medical director, was unable to make it because of the meeting moving to 6:00. He gets off at 7:00. But all the same. So, in conjunction with that, if I could have the mayor come out, please, sir? We would like to present some life-saving commendations or sort of cases. And I will read them and pass them to you, and you can shake their hand and then line up. Hope here, if you would, please. Starting with Mr. Hawkes, the star of the night. (applause) I've got several citations for Alpena Township personnel, but I'd like to start with one for the Alpena Township Fire Department across the board, the whole department, and I'm hoping it could be accepted by Chief Ravens and Mr. Skiba. (applause) Everything we do requires teamwork, absolutely, and without the close cooperation and collaboration between services, these kinds of things couldn't happen. From Alpena Township, we also have firefighter MFR Matt Klimcheck, firefighter EMT Jake Ordway, who's also with Press Gill, by the way, and Captain Ken Piper of Alpena Township. If you'd come forward. (applause) City personnel on the call provided the advanced life support part of the thing. It starts with CPR and it goes on to more and more, but the advanced life support care is really very, very important. In fact, our second citation after this incident is one where they averted a CPR case by correcting the problem in the first place. But we did have three paramedics that were actually first on the scene, even before first responders in this particular case. If they would come forward, please. Captain Paramedic Rob Edmonds, firefighter paramedic Rob Hamilton, and firefighter paramedic Dan Hibner. (applause) Mr. Hawkes, thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Hamilton's only been with us a short time. You usually get a life-saving commendation in your first year or so. Also like to recognize the Michigan Rural EMS Network, which made possible the HPCPR that was used there, the PUCs that were used there. We learned about from them and then funded through the Community Foundation, and through that partnership, we've really enhanced the emergency cardiac care here in the Alpena area. So Mr. Hall, if you would come forward. Thank you. Anybody like to say a word? Do you know how to do that?
We are just so proud to be a part of this initiative in Alpena. As Chief Forbush said, through grant funds, we were able to bring our My Rescue program to Alpena, which includes a high-performance CPR component. The My Rescue Initiative has been spearheaded in York County by Chief Bill Forbush, as well as firefighter paramedic Tyler Suchek. They've done an outstanding job and have just been a model for our program and how this My Rescue Initiative is implemented. We're so humbled to be a part of Mr. McGuire's story, and we hope to see many more lives saved in Alpena County.
Thank you very much. That concludes the citations for the first CPR one. If you guys would like to have your photos now before we move to the second one, you guys are going to have to. (laughter) Jake, you know all the...
There you go.
Jake, that was open class. It doesn't diminish your support. (laughter) Will? Yes, can we get this to McGuire, please?
Yes.
Send Mr. Hawkes as well. Mr. Hawkes, would you like to come forward as well, sir?
Please.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. (laughter) Now look at me. Thank you very much. We are very pleased in our community to have really the finest EMS system that I'm aware of anywhere in Northern Michigan. We've got great paramedics, we've got strong EMTs, and it really is doing, we're doing a good job here, and I'm really proud of my crew. We've got great guys. In a separate incident, bear with me just one more, if you would. In a separate incident, life was saved through advanced care preventing cardiac arrest. On August 27th, just recently, Alpena Fire Department firefighter paramedics Nick Harrison and Doug Keel responded for apparent patient experiencing weakness and palpitations. There we go, weakness and palpitations. They assessed the patient and detected a dangerous heart rhythm, sinus tach, and aggressively treated it with a synchronized cardioversion shock and medication stabilizing the patient and reversing the rapid decline into cardiac arrest. Their actions clearly saved the patient's life. On the screen there, the top EKG is what it should look like, the bottom EKG is what it did look like. They used the appropriate treatment to slow the heart back down so that it could pump blood effectively and therefore save this person's life. Rural paramedics must be extremely proficient and able to quickly assess and react to their findings, treating patients in an environment of long response and transport times. Quality advanced life support care is critical to stabilize and care for rural patients, and these two medics are on the front lines. So in connection with this incident, the following life-saving citations are being presented to Nick Harrison and Doug Keel. If you'd come forward, please. (applause) Thank you very much, Councilor. Here is the absentee voter ballot application on the city website at www.alpena.mi.us.
Can I just say a little?
Yeah. If you want to just take over.
Sure. The absentee voter ballot applications look a little bit like this. You can go online and get them. You can get them now, and the deadline is November 6th of this year at 4:00 PM to vote absentee. And anybody can do that if they're 60 or older, if they expect to be out of the community the day of the election, if you're physically unable to attend the polls without the assistance of another, if you cannot attend the polls because of the tenets of your religion, if you have been appointed an election precinct inspector in a precinct other than your own, and if you cannot attend the polls because you are confined to jail awaiting arraignment or trial. And that doesn't mean that you're in jail, it means you're waiting for a trial. So those are the reasons you can come and vote an absentee ballot if you wish. Just come into our office. You can send the application, you can email it, or drop it off.
Thank you, Karen. And the next announcement is the deadline for write-in candidates for City Council is October 27th, 2017 at 4:00 PM.
Yes, and you can come into the city clerk's office, my office, anytime. Fill out a form. You do not need a petition as a write-in candidate. It doesn't cost any money. Some places allow you to pay a certain amount of money rather than petitions, so come in and fill that out if you want to be a write-in candidate for the November 7th election.
Okay. Next up are proclamations. I have two this evening. The first one is 30 Days of Peace. Whereas the first annual 30 Days of Peace began on September 11th, 2007, the 101st anniversary of Mahatma Gandhi's creation of the modern nonviolence movement, and concluded on October 10th, the birthday of the late international journalist and musician Daniel Pearl. And whereas the central focus of 30 Days is the International Day of Peace, or Peace Day, held annually on September 21st, and whereas we in Alpena are celebrating our 11th annual 30 Days of Peace presented by the Alpena Coalition for Peace and supported by L.A.R.C.C., we have collaborated with our local community to lend our unique expression of this event, and whereas for us it means to increase awareness, educate, and inspire persons in our community to embrace peace as a choice, and we do this through providing dynamic speakers who challenge us to think beyond our own experience, films which educate and inform, open panel discussions which help us to see both sides of issues, the arts and music whose universal language helps us to experience a spirit of unity and religious experiences which open our souls to deeper prayer and a more peaceful way of living. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim September 11th to October 10th, 2017, as 30 Days of Peace in Alpena, and encourage the participation of all public, private, and homeschool students to participate in the peace contest and peace concert, and all citizens to be involved in the scheduled activities held during this occasion found in the Alpena County Library and advertised in the Alpena News and the Alpena Senior Center and numerous churches. It was such a crowd, I don't know if Carol or anyone from the organization is here. Whereas the Siller family started the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation to honor the memory of their brother Stephen, a New York City firefighter who lost his life on September 11th, 2001, after strapping on his gear and running through the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel to the Twin Towers. And whereas the goal of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation is to continue Stephen's legacy by supporting our nation's first responders and service members, and their mission is to honor the sacrifice of firefighter Stephen Siller, who laid down his life to save others on September 11th, 2017. his life to save others on September 11th, 2001, and to honor our military and first responders who continue to make the supreme sacrifice of life and limb for our country. And whereas Building for America's Bravest, a program of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation constructs specially-adapted smart homes for our most catastrophically-injured service members. Each home is custom-designed to address the unique needs of each individual, energy-efficient, automated, and easily accessible. These homes are adaptive technology to help our most severely-injured heroes live better, more independent lives. And whereas the Tunnel to Towers 5K Run-Walk Series was created to retrace the final steps of Stephen Siller, the Run-Walk Event pays homage to all the first responders who made and continue to make extraordinary sacrifices in the line of duty. And whereas in January of 2016, Sharon Cole of WATZ Radio answered the call to bring the first Tunnel to Towers 5K Run-Walk in Michigan to the community of Alpena in September of last year, attracting 540 participants and raising $26,610. And whereas the Alpena Tunnel to Towers Run-Walk will be held on September 16th, 2017, starting at the Band Shell at Baby Park. Registration begins at 8:00 AM. And now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 16th, 2017, as Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Recognition Day in the city of Alpena, and encourage residents to participate in the event following the suggestions on their website and Facebook page and support all their local public safety officers and service members. And we have Sharon and now quite a few of our groups here.
Somebody way in the back trying to get out of here.
Steve, I thought we were friends.
Look, Steve first.
All right, next is our public information meeting. This is for the purchase of one new police vehicle through a grant from the United States Department of Agriculture on rural development. I'll open the public information meeting, and we'll first have a report from our police chief, Joel Jet.
I'll be reading from the memo presented in the pack, sir. As previously authorized, an application was submitted to the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Program requesting grant funds to assist with the purchase of a replacement patrol vehicle and its related equipment. I received notice on August 15th from the USDA that the agency had received the city's application and that the general requirements were met. Plumber quotes for the vehicle and the related equipment tally of approximately $54,426. I have requested the maximum amount of funding from the USDA, nearly 40% of the total project, and the city stands to receive approximately $21,700 if awarded a grant. Our replacement patrol vehicle and its related equipment have been budgeted for the 2017-18 fiscal year, and the city would be responsible for the remaining balance of the project. As such, I'm requesting permission to continue with the application process with the USDA.
Thank you, Chief, and I'll open to public comment. As I mentioned before, if anyone has any comments they would like to make to council in regard to the police vehicle explanation we just got, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Any written comments received in the secretary's office? Okay, close the public information meeting and open council discussion. Has any questions? The chief ran off, so if you don't have to.
We've been involved in several programs in the past like this, and I appreciate you finding some funding out there for replacement costs if you need to replace anybody, so I don't have any issue or questions.
Yes, we have enjoyed tremendous success with the program. They funded four of our five cars, so it's been a lot of communities don't have that luck, but they've been very kind to us, so I expect this will go through as well.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Do we need action on that? It's time we approve and grant permission from Chief Joel Jet to continue with the application process with the USDA.
Let me finish.
Are you talking to me?
Was it Susan that?
I think so.
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Report of officers, two bids, Public Safety Facility, second-floor variable air volume replacement.
Mike Kaleschewski.
First, I apologize. I did turn the air conditioning up, but I didn't anticipate this many people, so bodies kind of overcame what I adjusted the air conditioning up, but it is cranked up, so again, I apologize. On August 22nd, 2017, the city received an open bid for the Public Safety Second-Floor VAV Replacement and Controls. Bid documents were posted on the city of Alpena website with two bids received from local firms. Bids which included four alternates ranged from $50,656 to $51,491. The base bid in alternates M1 and M3 are the required items to complete the VAV replacement on the second floor, including one VAV missed on the first floor. In review of both base bids with alternates M1 and M3, base prices ranged from $42,411 to $42,489. We budgeted $48,000 for the 2017-18 year to complete this project. We also required the service of Spicer Engineering for some design assist service that was approved at $3,460. The scope of the project is to remove the existing VAVs, variable air volume units on the second floor, install new VAVs, including hot water coils, valves, and control system. The existing VAV units are original with the building, with most of them not working or working properly or at all. Parts are difficult to find and are expensive when found. This results in additional use of energy resulting in higher utility bills, comfort issues, and overall building performance. Additionally, alternate M1 will replace the VAV in the fire EMS sleeping quarters with additional ductwork to each sleeping room for a better comfort. This area has been an issue for several years. There are additional alternates M2 and M4 that are added to the bid request that allowed us to consider other needs and yet remain within budget or for inclusion in a future budget. It is my recommendation, as Assistant City Building Official, that we award Winkoff Plumbing and Heating the contract for Public Safety VAV project at the price of $42,411, which includes alternate M1 and M3. When combining bid price with design services, we came in $2,129 under budget.
Did I read that right? You got a little more than what you even budgeted for, as far as the project goes.
Correct.
I didn't have any questions.
The only comment I've got, Mike, is thank you for the explanation of exactly what the scope of the project was. I think it was very detailed, gave us a pretty good view of exactly what needed to happen, and obviously incredibly happy with coming in under budget. So thank you.
May we award the Public Safety Facility Second-Floor VAV Replacement to Winkoff Heating and Heating?
Second.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Now we got the 2017 valve replacement.
On August 29th, the city received an open bid for valve replacement project for this year. We budget funding for replacement of valves every year. Typically, we've done them one or two at a time in conjunction with other projects. This year, we elected to target valves on the north side. Right now, we have a number of broken valves in large areas that we have to shut down in the event of a break or if we need to do additional work. The north side has predominantly been a problem, in the essence of we taking the forge out of service and the wicky sausage shop out of service, which have to shut down the processes, et cetera. So we will be installing three new valves to reduce shutdown areas and also replacing three broken valves that exist over there. We sent bid documents to the local contractors. We've only one bid received, and that was from MacArthur Construction, in the amount of $30,300. We did establish $30,000 in the budget for the valve replacement project. We anticipate, based on review of the work that needs to be done, that we can eliminate some of the connection components, some solid sleeves, et cetera, that we don't feel we will need. So more than likely, the project will come in below the $30,300. But this time, it's my recommendation, the city engineer, that the project be awarded to MacArthur Construction for the ads bid unit prices totaling $30,300.
I know you're looking at me. Okay. Okay, so did we get any feedback from any of the other contractors on why there was no bid?
A lot of them were just busy.
Is it, you know, to follow that up with, sometimes we've heard the other contractors were busy at this time of year and stuff like this. Would it make sense, or, and, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong, would it make sense to maybe put these out earlier in the year all at one time, or is this a project that just came along later?
This is one that, it's budgeted after July 1st. So this was the first time the funding was available, and we could get this in with all the other work, just kind of when it fell in place for us to get the work done. But we really anticipated a couple of the other contractors to potentially bid on it, and Shannon did contact them, but they just, they just didn't have the time or resources to commit to it.
And the timeline that you have to start and finish the project is this fall?
Yes.
Correctly?
We may award the contractor, MacArthur Construction, for the VAV price of $30,300.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
No.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. Communications and petitions. First one is, and I think the name is Draz Winkoff, request for noise variance from 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM at 116 Avery Street on September 9th, 2017. I don't know if he was taken.
Want me to read it?
I sure will.
We have Draz Winkoff stop in the office to request the following. Saturday, September 9th, they will be having a band in their garage for a family gathering at 116 Avery Street. He is looking for a noise variance between the hours of 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM. They will be playing from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Jennifer sent it around to all the department heads. Our concern with keeping it on the consent agenda is there might need to be some discussion because this is a private citizen requesting an hour variance on the noise.
It was rather late, or very close, within about 10 days of the event. Obviously, we sent out to all the department heads to get comments, and what we did not know, since this is in a residential neighborhood, was if any of the adjoining properties and those across the street had been notified. What we didn't want to have is that if they had not been, you approved this under the consent agenda, and then there are complaints, which either could be through the police that, you know, complaining of noise after 10 o'clock, or, and then obviously making complaints to you and to us. So we want to, especially in residential, anytime there are any residences nearby in these types of requests, we'd like to know that they've talked to them, preferably got them to sign off that they don't have, or at least the vast majority of them, that they don't have objection to it, in this case for one hour. So that's what we asked. We asked him to be here tonight, which I assume he is, and that he notify in the meantime his neighbors and show us that indeed they've been notified, do not have any major objection.
And we've done that a couple of times. I know there's been a couple of weddings in residential areas at homes, and I guess my thought would be about the same as Greg, is that especially in the neighborhood, the immediate neighborhood, even though it's just one hour on a Saturday, it would alleviate a lot of calls to the police department if someone had already approached a lot of the neighbors. So even if they, even if every single one of them didn't completely sign off and agree with it, they would at least know that that's what was going on. And I don't know, I'll ask if Mr. Winkoff is here. Is Mr. Winkoff here? Okay, please don't. I'm not sure how to, and because that's a pretty big concern, I'll leave it to council. If somebody would like to move, I mean, I guess I'll just reiterate that it is, it's one hour on a Saturday night. I'm not incredibly concerned with it, but at the same time, I see that staff would be...
I guess our opinion would be, we asked him to come to the minutes meeting, he's not here, that he, as a result, should sacrifice the one hour. It's only one hour, and that he abide by the current time, noise allowance to 10 o'clock. And what we do, we are, would like to get at least a feeling from the council is, we want to make, we want to make it very clear, it kind of was in the past, but it got away from it, is that these requests, especially if they have to go to council, that we receive them at least three weeks before the council meeting that it'll be acted on. The reason being, one, we have to get it out to staff, we get replies back, there may be questions, we then have to get with the applicant, get additional information, and review again, and what we're finding is it's getting closer, these are being submitted closer and closer to the time of the event, or when council has to act, and it makes it very hard for us to get complete information to you so that you can intelligently act. Or if it doesn't go to council and it's strictly staff, we would like it three weeks before the event. So again, we can go through the same thing, and if we do have questions. We're not saying that if you do it less than three weeks, that it will be automatically rejected, that it has a much higher chance, because if it is something where we need more information, there may not simply be enough time. We do get some that are very simple, in which case, yes, we can do it in a week, or, you know, even less. But we're getting some that require more input and often questions to be asked. So we want to get that information out on our website and other ways, that if you're going to apply for these special events, and especially they need to go, you know, no matter which, that they need to be done well enough in advance, that we have adequate time to get the comment from departments and to get the information to you if it does need to be acted upon, even if it is in the consent agenda, and we still have the information. So I guess at this point, our feeling would be, at least I'm going to say as city manager, person didn't show up, we don't know if he has contacted his neighbors or not, so I would say, yes, it's only an hour, but I guess that's what I would say to him, if it's only an hour, you just quit at 10 instead of at 11.
I guess, you know, recalling some of the events from the past, too, it seemed like some people had actually brought in, you know, letters from neighbors and stuff, you know, saying, "No issues with this," and approved. I mean, it's, that's the difficult thing for me to approve something like this when we have no feedback whatsoever, or even, you know, even being here saying, you know, "I've talked to all the neighbors, we won't do with it," so.
I don't know that we've ever denied a request, but we've always had neighbors chime in that it was okay, so without no Mike's comments.
I think the last few people that have come before us have not only made the neighbors aware, they've invited the neighbors to the party, so there should be no misunderstanding.
There's no misunderstanding whatsoever. That's a good start.
Sir, other than the three weeks, Greg, is there anything else that you would suggest that we, we get from the neighbors? Do we require, like, letters to be written, or?
Yeah, or they just have something that just says, you know, that we're having this event, and these people are aware, and they just sign off on it, you know? And, you know, you may not get everybody, but, you know, if you can show that you've got the majority, as the mayor said, at least the others know. And it could even be that if you don't agree with it, but you were at least told, you signed that part, whatever. I know it's a little more work, but at least in writing, we know that they've been contacted, and we know how it goes. So, if somebody does complain later, we can at least show that.
And I, just not to get too far off topic on that, I would appreciate if maybe at some point you bring that back, and if that's something we need to approve, but that's going to be a official policy.
Yeah, I don't know, well.
Because we currently don't have anything in place. I guess I'll just remind everybody that we don't have anything in place that specifically states these requirements. So, Mr. Winkoff did come to us, and even though Greg talked to him and asked him if he would provide some neighborhood input and possibly show up tonight, personally, I have absolutely no idea why he's not here. And I always hate to say, well, maybe he just doesn't care because he quite possibly could be in the hospital or something. So, I'm, I guess I'm looking at this as a garage, a garage party for his family gathering. I don't know, I don't know him, or really, frankly, don't even know this neighborhood too well. I know where Avery Street is. I'm going to say an hour on a Saturday to alleviate some issues with police department. Being called there maybe numerous times, that, I don't know, it may be easier for the police department if this was approved, where they don't have to keep running out. I don't know how much noise you could actually put out in one hour on a Saturday night. That would be terrible. I would, I'd support, I'd support the guy and his, his family gathering, but that's just me.
I would support it. I mean, I'm kind of upset he's not here to tell us his position, but he might think we start at 7:00, too. Do you think?
Yeah. And it's, I just, I don't know. I would like to get something in place, but even then, the hardest part about putting something in place is that you can't get that information out to people enough for them to know that. I mean, we can put it in place, and that'd be a nice policy to have, but try to get the information out there. But for this particular case, which is what's on our table today, I would entertain a motion to, to grant his request, to see where it goes.
I move we grant his request for the hour. Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. The next up is the River Center Board update on the River Center.
Thank you. We're in the process of presenting to five counties, county, or the county boards, and the Thunder Bay River Center Board point would be a good idea to just kind of give folks an update and kind of get into that, and we'll kind of keep it as brief as we can.
The good news is that I'm not going to go through every piece of paper I asked Greg to put in your packet. We'll just go through a few of the highlights since we were here a year ago in August. We, the River Center Board is, and the Thunder Bay River Center is now incorporated and recognized as a 501(c)(3). We did file our 990s this year for the first time. We applied in December of last year for architectural fees through U.S. DePauw Development. And this is the same group that gave us the original $15,000 to do the feasibility study. They were, in fact, very happy to see us come back because quite frequently, they award money for a feasibility study and never see it again. So, they were very excited to see us. I think the real interesting thing about this is the widespread support that we received for the application for the grant. One of the things that we had to show was that this was going to contribute to the economic development of Alpena and to the Thunder Bay River watershed communities. And consequently, we received 22 support letters from small businesses. That was not a small achievement. And we also received support letters from the county commissioners of all five county boards in the watershed, as well as from our own city council. So, we were awarded, we were allowed to apply for up to $45,000, and which is what they told us would be the maximum we could achieve, and we were awarded that amount of money. So, that was one of the big achievements, I think, for this year. In your package, you do have a little bit of how we are doing on our in-kind match, so I'm not going to go through that with you at all. We do have, we have potential income, which we talked about last year, I believe. And so, this year, I did put together just a pop, what would be the possible expenses, and that's on the back page of that River Center draft revenue table. And you'll notice in there that one of our big concerns, and your concern as well, is the notion of sustainability. And so, I put in that budget that we would take a 10% of our first year's budget to put into the sustainability fund, and that we would in turn build that every year, even if it meant that we couldn't hire people, or we couldn't do whatever, or we had to cut back on what we could do. So, that 10% of the income each year should go into that sustainability fund, so that we are able to operate, and we leave, as we, the original people leave, that we will be able to leave it in pretty good hands. One of the other things that we did for the promotion this year, you do have a copy of the brochure. Not sure you have the latest copy because we keep revising it, but we have a promotional brochure now that is complete, that has been approved by the board. And I have received quotes from Allegra on little cost to print that, to print, do a mass printing of that. We contracted with Stacy Van Orman of IGT. It's a local, you are probably all familiar with Stacy. Has a wonderful little drone that he flies around and takes lovely photographs. So, we contracted with him to produce a promotional video. And then as soon as I finish these couple remarks, then we'll show that. And it's about three minutes long, and it will give you a good idea of where we are and what we're doing. We also have developed some materials for, for potentially larger donors. And last summer, yeah, a year ago summer, I asked Betsy Willis to do a painting of the wildlife sanctuary, which she did. As you know, Betsy has since died. We had 100 copies of that printed, and Betsy signed each of them and numbered them. So, those will be given to donors who give us $10,000 or more. And we already have a couple of people who have met that, who record that amount. We did receive a substantial donation in late spring, $40,000. So, we're moving along slowly but surely, mostly slowly. And then we have even naming rights for various parts of the building. And that little schematic is in your package, too, and I won't go into that. And there's also a picture in there of the painting that Betsy did. Dick Willis has donated it. He gave me the painting, and it will be framed so that someday it will hang in the River Center. So, if you don't have any questions, that's all I have to tell you, and you can see the movie. No pop-calling.
Thank you.
All right. For some reason, this doesn't unload today for me. In any case, there's a movie, and we'll make sure it's available for anyone that wants to see it. I believe it's on the website already, but if it's not, we will make sure it gets there. But I apologize, we're having technical difficulties.
Can you access it through the website? Are you on?
It is on website.
Do you have a guard?
No, I was asking if Adam could access our website.
What's the website of Judy?
ThunderBayRiverCenter.org.
Thank you.
And it's also on Facebook page.
Yeah, another website I want to work. All right. Well, technical difficulties, we can, I don't know. Whatever you guys want to do with that one. I'll think about it. The reason this thing's moving, I'm not sure if it's going to load, it's new, but we'll try it. I got a question right here. No problems, machine. So, all right.
Yeah, looks like it's going to go.
Hold on. It's not doing what it should. So, I apologize.
Yeah, it's all right. All right.
Wait, hold on.
Oh?
Okay. Yeah, we're going to get it up. Sorry.
Looks like it's all locked up, good.
Maybe it's thinking about. All right, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Looks like it's slow to react to just about anything.
Yep.
But we'll check it out on the website. All right. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update on the River Center. Okay, Noak, finish business, new business is a reconsideration of two-way street traffic on North Second Avenue from Chisholm Street to Carter and Water Street. Turn this over to Susan, who I've asked to put her on the agenda.
After seeing the demonstration by city staff on Second Avenue, I have strong misgivings about the safety aspect of the two-way streets. Not only would two-way streets make it difficult for some senior citizens, but people with young children in car seats would have a difficult time accessing and exiting on both sides of a vehicle. The one thing missing in the demonstration, in my mind, is the human error. People do not always park within the lines, which could add up to a terrible event in downtown Alpena. Add the snow buildup in the gutter during the winter, and we're asking for a disaster if we have two-way traffic on Second Avenue. The event has, that has sealed my decision, is that since the last council meeting, I have received numerous phone calls. I'm not exaggerating. One day, I spent the whole day on the phone. I just stopped trying to do anything else. Every single phone call, well, I won't say every single, there were three or four that were not negative as far as two-way streets is concerned. The phone calls have tapered off drastically. I think most people want to get their feelings and ideas to the forefront before the end of the day. So, I don't want you to leave with the idea that I'm sitting by the phone every single day taking phone calls. That's not the case. However, there were enough that made me rethink my decision. Every time I go downtown, I meet somebody else who says, I want to show you this, I want to tell you this, and it's over and over and over. My general feeling is that, and not feeling, I believe, businesses don't want it, people don't want it, citizens don't want it. Everybody thinks it's a bad idea, that I talked with fairly recently, thinks it's a bad idea for Alpena. I had no choice but to reconsider what I was saying in council. I believe we need to keep Second Avenue a one-way street, and included in that group are many other downtown business owners, the first two blocks of North Second. And I ask that we reconsider our vote, each and every one, and re-vote tonight.
Okay. And I studied the process a bit, talked to Bill. He made us aware at our last meeting that that was going to be your decision. What we can do for, for the, for council is, we can't reconsider our vote, we can't rescind our vote that we made on that specific motion, mainly because it was a complete project. We voted on an entire project that encompassed everything that, that we've done and are looking to do. What we can do, and what I believe you're requesting to do, is amend the motion that we made and approved on September 6th, 2016. And so, if you would like to make that recommendation, and I believe that you're, that you want to make that recommendation, what I'll do is just to make sure that, just to make sure that we don't all have this, have a long discussion, and there's no support for it, I'll ask you to make that motion and make sure that we have support. And then if anybody wants to have some discussion before the vote, then we'll do that, and then, and then we'll.
Are you asking that we amend the vote?
No, you are.
Yeah. No, that I amend my vote, that's what I'm asking.
That we amend the motion that we made on September 16th, 2016. And I won't read the whole thing, but it encompassed the whole project. So, you're going to want to amend your motion.
Or amend my vote?
Not your motion.
You can technically amend the motion, but the same one.
All right.
And then, and then, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so.
Well, I want you to right now. I want to know what you want. You want me to, I, I'm moved that we, that we amend my motion to have two-way streets in Alpena. Is that what you're asking me to say?
No, because, okay, well, we've already done some of the project, so.
I think what he's asking is your motion should be Second Avenue. From Chisholm to Carter Street remain one-way.
Or, or remove second, move the, remove those two blocks of Second Avenue from?
From the original?
The original.
That's what I want to do. I'm moved that we amend the motion and remove the two blocks of North Second Avenue from the original motion. And I would like to amend the motion to say, no, you want me to stop?
It's already one-way.
But Bill, would you, is that what?
It's technically a motion to amend something previously adopted. So, your motion would be, if you wish to make it, would be to amend what was adopted on September 6th, 2016 regarding the two-way downtown traffic pattern to remove and/or exclude the two blocks of Second Avenue that are north of Chisholm Street, including Chisholm to River and River to Center.
And River to?
And River to Center. Would you be asking to remove those two blocks if that's what you wish to have council consider?
I hope I kept up well. I want to amend the motion on September 6th, 2016 regarding the two blocks of North Second Avenue from Chisholm to River, to the River, to the River. And remove and exclude the two blocks.
Those are the two blocks.
Carter.
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 I'm sorry.
Remove.
Yeah. I'm sorry, just confused you. It's River to Center.
Carter.
How about the center of Carter?
Chisholm to Carter. I want to just make whatever I want to say, and don't ask. Chisholm to Carter. Chisholm to Carter.
Chisholm to Carter.
Which, which one come?
Carter's the last.
Yes.
You want to go from Chisholm?
Okay, it's water on one side.
That's okay.
And exclude two blocks.
From River to Carter.
From River to Carter.
Chisholm.
Chisholm.
Chisholm, no. Two blocks from Chisholm.
From Chisholm to Carter.
We have to stand one, you got it.
We got it.
A very close issue, but I think council's done a good job of debating it, and let us move forward together.
I just reiterated a couple of things Mike said. I've, I've been up here a long time, this is only the second time I've seen somebody rescind a vote. It's not easy to do, and, you know, I give you credit for that, and I know your phone went off the hook, probably from, from both sides. So, you know, to be able to look at an issue and walk away from your, your personal point of view and look at what other people think, you know, you have to credit her. You know, Mike mentioned it's how it's supposed to work. Mike's not mad, you know, that, that we go in a different direction. Maybe, maybe a little bit.
Disappointed. I've been here.
But, I mean, have, we'll have more challenging issues than this, certainly, it'll come up in the future, and I know a couple are down the pike, so. I know the media thinks it's fun when the vote's three to two, but it's, that's how it's supposed to be. You know, you're supposed to have representation in different areas. So, I certainly agree with those comments. You know, I obviously have, I'm against it, I, I started out for it, especially as somebody newer to the community, that it seemed somewhat confusing. And really, when we look at who we represent, you know, it made me realize that this wasn't what people want. I hadn't heard a lot of compelling reasons for it, I've heard a lot of compelling reasons against it. And more importantly, to me than anything, is that people directly affected by it didn't want it. And I think even if I thought it was a good idea, it's not my idea to push, it's, it's their idea. They're the ones that are affected by it downtown. So, you know, to me, on an issue that honestly, we would have survived either way, you know, and if you do support two-way and it goes against that tonight, it'll be fine how it is. And if it did go to two-way, maybe it wasn't preferable in my opinion, but we would have been fine too. So, it is democracy in action, and, and people spoke, and council listened, and I commend Susan for putting her, herself out there, and then Mike's attitude as the opposition. So, I feel good about it, it did take a little longer maybe than, than we'd like, but, you know, eventually it came to, to the way it should.
Did you have anything?
No, I just, I just want to thank, thank Susan for, it's brave to do that, to, to change your mind. And I thank her for doing that. I think, and I've been against, I haven't been against two ways in theory, it's just what was brought to us was piecemeal. It wasn't a whole project for me to look at and say, yes, the whole system changes. It was, we're doing this system. Well, when you change one section of traffic flow, it affects the whole system, and you have to look at that. So, in my opinion, it wasn't that I was against two ways, I was against the plan that was brought to me, because it wasn't, it didn't include everything in what we were going to do. And I think doing it in piecemeal, and that the business owners and that section didn't want it, I wouldn't vote for it. Now, if you brought me a complete plan that everything's going to change, and, and we do it all at once, I might reconsider, but not, not the plan that was brought. And I thank Susan again for being brave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Complete.
That's right.
I guess my only, my only input to the whole thing is that I really, like council, I, I truly appreciate everybody that has called me and has met with me, and that I met with, I know Mike Mahler couldn't make it this evening, but he's a, he's the chair person of the DDA Economic Development Board that I'm on, that started to develop this concept two years ago. And so, you know, and Mike and I both really appreciated our meetings with the business owners, our meetings with Leslie Dort before she, before Ann took over, and then Ann, and we had a lot of, a lot of really good discussions with business owners, it was a learning experience. There were times where I, where I had a little bit of feedback because of my support for two-way, that I wasn't listening to the community, and I wasn't listening to the business owners, but, but that really can't be any further from the truth. When we left those meetings, Mike and I would take our notes, and we would compare to make sure that both of us understood everything that was said there. And it doesn't always mean that we're not listening if we don't necessarily agree, there's kind of a difference. But we did actually pick, we picked every single concern that was brought to us and decided whether we, can we address that, can we fix it, can we do something about it, whether it was exhaust fumes at outdoor dining, whether it was safety of people sitting at the outdoor dining facilities, whether it was speeding traffic, or, you know, or pedestrian safety, and we addressed and discussed in, in quite a few groups as to what can we do to, to alleviate that. Obviously, the parking issue was huge, we addressed that, and, and so it didn't pass, it didn't, you know, and this time. And so, like Mike, I continue to support the concept, because the concept of the two-way streets in, in Alpena weren't just something that, 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 that small committee came up with.
We will do. We have been looking at the parking, and as, as the mayor said, the intersection there at Carter and Second, we'll, we'll look at some improvements there and present those here either later in the fall or the winter. Those would not be implemented until spring, probably at that point. We'll just have to figure out a time, because basically, we'll be closing down the road to, especially if we do make parking changes and any lane changes to accommodate that, resealing the street in order to go back and, and re-stripe, just as we did on, you know, Carter Street on, on River Street. So, we'd be looking at then what would be an appropriate time in the spring, when things can be scheduled with the contractors to get them in. And that, that will be as much as anything as far as what will dictate that.
So, there was that.
But, not in terms of the issue itself.
When you're ready, Karen.
Noack?
No.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
I move you to adjourn. Thank you. That's one lesson, get to the next one. Have a good day.
Good.